Good evening. Let me officially call this meeting to order. This is the meeting for the Carson Planning Commission. And welcome, everyone. It's good to see you. I am officially calling the meeting to order and we will begin with our pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Wilson if she would lead us in our pledge.
Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I feel off-centered. Okay, but it is what it is. No, 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 I'm just, you know, just got a lot of things going on here, but I shall continue. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Madam Chair Thomas?
Here.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Doc Dossel?
Here.
Commissioner Garrett is excused. Commissioner Huff?
Present.
Commissioner Infume?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
We have a call. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda will be oral communications for matters not on the agenda. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers for items not on the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Next item, we have oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda. Members of the public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
We do.
Yes. Would you like to introduce our first speaker, please? Or you want me to do it from this sheet? Okay, didn't know if you had one too. Is there a Salvador George? I have one speaker. There you go. All right, you've got three minutes.
Basketball game?
I will throw an apple at you if you speak more than three minutes.
All right. Honorable members of the Carson Planning Commission, my name is Salvador George and I'm a 20-year member and representative of the Carpenters Union Local 323, located here in Carson. First and foremost, I want to commend the city of Carson. Its proactive steps in streamlining development process by allowing administrative approval, the city is fostering an environment that attracts investments and fuels economic growth. This amendment is a clear signal to developers that Carson is a competitive, business-friendly city ready for smart and sustainable growth. However, as we remove barriers to develop, for developments, it is crucial to ensure that this investment translates into the real benefits for the people of Carson. Our city has a right, a rich labor history, and with the right policies, we can ensure that this economic growth uplifts our residents, particularly our youth, by providing access to well-paying lifelong careers in the trades. With this in mind, we urge the city to incorporate key workforce development provisions into this initiative, including prevailing wage, apprenticeship and development, and workforce development, labor standards enforcement, and equitable contracting programs. By coupling these amendments with strong labor standards and workforce development initiatives, Carson can solidify its position as a leader in equitable economic development. One that not only attracts businesses but also invests in its people. This approach will ensure that Carson remains a city that is both competitive and proud of the workforce it fosters. We look forward to working collaboratively with the city to ensure that these projects benefit both developers and the hard-working men and women who build them. To speak a little bit more about prevailing wage requirements, ensuring that projects benefiting from streamlined approvals uphold prevailing wage standards will protect the workers from exploitation and guarantee that the public and the private investments contribute to a fair and livable wage economy. A little bit more on apprenticeship and workforce development. We encourage the city to include language that incentivizes or requires developers to hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs, prioritizing local hiring initiatives that connect young people and career seekers with lifelong sustainable careers and skilled trades. And thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
That wasn't too long, was it?
That was excellent. That was excellent. Okay.
Can show our support. And we're hoping that you can couple workforce and the labor apprenticeships, prevailing wage and labor standards to this streamlined process.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much for coming out. You may well be the only speaker, but you did an excellent job. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, Madam Secretary?
We do not.
Okay. Then with that, at this point, we will close oral communication. Next item on the agenda will be the consent calendar.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Diaz, second by Commissioner Infume. Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. New business discussion workshop discussing tentative tract maps and tentative parcel maps and approval authority. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, I'll be providing that presentation for.
You have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Today, we're going to have a brief discussion on subdivisions and how they operate here in the city of Carson. I'm Chris Palmer, Planning Manager. And the way it's going to go is we're going to talk a little bit about the definitions, how maps are used, how the process works, and potential conflicts. Definition, these definitions are found in the city's municipal code and it defines subdivision as a division of land. A tract map is a final map prepared in accordance with the provisions of this chapter and applicable provisions of the Subdivision Map Act, which is to be filed in the office of the county recorder as a tract map. And the parcel map is defined the same. But what that actually means is a tract map and a parcel map are documents that divide real property into smaller lots. Parcel maps are used to create four or fewer lots. Tract maps are used to create five or more lots. Parcel and tract maps are used to create residential lots to divide land for sale, lease, or financing, and to create condominiums. How the process works is an application is submitted. The application is viewed by planning, public works, fire department, sheriff, Los Angeles County, and their departments. And a public hearing is held and the Planning Commission decides. The potential conflicts, state law and general plan. Consistency with state law and the housing element, housing impediments, barriers to affordable housing, and by right versus Planning Commission review. And so what I'm going to go into in my staff report after this discussion is basically kind of pointing out what happens. We adopted our general plan, our Phase 1, and what that, in doing so, most residential development are by right uses. This introduces an entitlement process that goes before the Planning Commission. And what that can do is potentially slow development or stop development or hinder it because of the cost, the timing. On average, tract maps, when run through the full process, can take up to two years. And that's just for the tract map portion. And we're only in control of a portion of it because the county has this process for review as well. This actually concludes the brief kind of introduction. And so at this point, at this moment, I can take any questions you have. And then, once those questions are answered, we could get into the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from my?
Madam Chair, no questions. I think it's self-explanatory. Thank you.
Well, none from him. Anybody else have any questions? I liked the way you said that, Commissioner Diaz. Anyone else? Let's move forward. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. And anyone who wishes to speak, are you going to do a presentation before?
No, I'm gonna.
So you're good for right now?
I'm just presenting and I just have that there so people can kind of see what we're talking about.
Okay. Do we have any speakers, public hearing, based on anything that has been said? Look at you trying to get up again. I see you. Yeah, come on, we got time.
We were about developing here in the city of Carson, right? We, as a Carpenters Union, do have a training center right down the street off of Central and 91 Freeway. In fact, we have one of our apprentices here today that's going through the program and is benefiting from being able to train on the job and also be able to come back to the school and train on the school so he can have lifelong career skills. This is beautiful right here because it invites developments to our city, right? My concern is when these developers come in, they apply. If it's a main ministry approval, they get a right to work. So I think it'll generate more business for the city of Carson, which is great. But I think the biggest part that we're missing here, once again, is the investment to our community. We have a lot of apprentices here, especially because we're out of Carson. So there's a lot of youth in the program right now that are going to their apprenticeship that could really benefit from this types of developments. If there was just a mechanism put in place as a part of this amendment that would help us, help these contractors have some sort of apprenticeship, have some sort of labor standards. And why not prevailing wage? A lot of these developments are going to generate generational wealth for these developers. And I think a small portion could go to our community and our folks that are working here, our labor workforce.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, if I may, just, I appreciate, no, you can sit down. But all of your points are well-taken. One thing I appreciate about the city of Carson, and especially the administrative people that we have now, our mayor in particular, and it trickles down, is every council meeting that I have attended where there was a developer involved or whatever, it was always requested that prevailing waves, unions are considered, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a part of the DNA for the city of Carson. I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, but last year when we had the apprentice workshop that took place at the community center and there were so many people out there, I think you were represented at that event, were you not?
We're very involved in issues around the city of Carson.
Yes, so it was a great workshop last year. A lot of people came out, a lot of people signed up to be apprentices in various projects that are either here or have already been approved. So one thing that this city does not leave out is the benefits that can be accrued by those people who are going to do the development and this city, the council, making sure that in approving those projects, that all of this subject matter that you brought up is included in there. Okay? So that we're okay with. We feel good about that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who did not fill out a card or would like to have anything to say? Don't be shy, because I'm going to shut it down.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think that you spoke very eloquently in regards to the state of address, as was stated here. I think there's two other components that we should look at or consider at all times as community development agreement, how that, you know, applies to the projects that come here. How does that help support the surrounding community as well as local hire? So, thank you.
Yes, that is another thing. Generally, what I have seen the council do is insist that a certain percentage of the workforce for the development of whatever the project is, is Carson residents. So again, it's something that she is passionate about, our mayor, Lula Davis-Homes, is passionate about. And so we follow that same tract or map, whichever you want to call it. You got it. Okay.
Madam Chair, one more.
Yes.
I added two, but there's a third one. PLA's project labor agreements are, you know, something.
Prevailing wage, yes.
Need to look at for large projects, et cetera.
Yes. So yeah, that's also a part of discussion. So we're all on the same page. I think we're good here, right? Yeah? Okay, all right. If there are no other speakers, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and I'm going to turn it back over to our manager and you may continue with your presentational discussion.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll get into the presentation and I'd like to introduce Carson Municipal Code Amendment 2025 ZTA 01. And that's a consideration of administrative approval of tentative parcel maps and tentative tract maps for condominium development. The Carson 2040 General Plan was adopted in April of 2023. It contains nine elements. It is designed to tailor to the current needs of the city and anticipated future needs of the city. It introduces a greater mix of land uses to reflect new and changing priorities. It encourages sustainability through transit-oriented mixed-use infill development and greater opportunity and equity. It promotes development in the core area and provides greater diversity of non-residential uses. The overarching policies, themes, and goals of the general plan are centered around promotion of housing and compliance with state law, becoming more business-friendly, expediting entitlement processes that promote high-quality development and eliminating impediments to development. A few of these examples that are found out, found throughout the general plan include Assembly Bill 686, which requires the city to affirmatively further fair housing in identifying specific plans and programs as well as assessment of fair housing practices and impediments. Various economic development principles from the city's economic development element include EDP 5, Establishing Inventory of Ready-to-Go Sites Complete with Zoning, Infrastructure, and Environmental Clearance, Establishing Objective Zoning and Design Regulations to Expedite Permitting and Approval. EDP 6, Identify and Support the Redevelopment of Outdated Commercial Areas to Provide Affordable, Flexible, and High-Quality Office and/or Research and Development Facilities to Attract Small Incubating Technology Companies. And EDP 7, Create Flexibility Around Commercial Floor Plates to Allow for Uses and Programs to Evolve and Adapt to Fast-Paced Changes of the Retail Industry. Full implementation of the general plan requires staff to continually monitor and review current land use policies to ensure that the city's intended outcomes and goals are being met. Some of this work has already been completed. Examples include, but aren't limited to, the city recently adopting Phase 1 of a Comprehensive Update to the Carson Municipal Code. Regulations included in the March 19, 2004 adoption made most housing development permissible by right in compliance with state law. This included all forms of multifamily development, whether apartments or condominiums. In November of 2024, the Planning Commission recommended to the city council a general plan amendment aimed at ensuring the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare through proposing a requirement to develop a specific plan prior to development of shutter refineries. Currently, staff is working on Phase 2 of the Comprehensive Update of the Carson Municipal Code and its adoption will also further implement the city's general plan. Advanced planning consists of comprehensive review of the municipal code. Systemically, staff monitors the adopted regulations and makes recommendations on outdated policies and procedures and all in concert with the general plan's guidance. Currently, tentative maps, tentative parcel maps, and tentative tract maps are under the purview of the Planning Commission, whether or not associated with the proposed development. Prior to Phase 1 adoption, a proposed multifamily development would need approval from the Planning Commission. And if the developer was proposing to sell the units, they would also need the commission to approve the subdivision to permit the sale of the units. A condominium is not a land use. It is a form of ownership. Whether or not a unit is for sale does not affect the land use. How these, but however, these two actions have been historically linked together. Recently, the Planning Commission voted to approve a tentative parcel map to subdivide land for two existing businesses. The owner simply desired to sell one of the businesses but was required to ask permission from the Planning Commission to split a single lot into two lots. This process took nearly a year and no development was proposed and no physical change to the existing site was required. The California Board of Real Estate estimated that the time involved in securing an approved tentative map takes a minimum of two years. Staff's own research concluded that even simple maps of simply dividing one parcel into two can take over a year to process. This is problematic considering the goals of the general plan, specifically the efforts towards removing impediments to housing and becoming more business-friendly. If a development is permissible by right, it should not be stalled or hindered by the process that does not regulate the land use. Subdivision Map Act and the city's subdivision ordinance govern the requirements for tentative tract and parcel maps and final map review is managed through the city's Public Works Division along with the Los Angeles County Public Works Department. The final map is signed by the city officials and the development can occur. It's a very lengthy process. Staff determined that by right land uses should be reflected consistently through the municipal code and proposes that administrative approval be allowed for subdivisions that are not proposing development. In addition, when a subdivision is proposed in conjunction with a by right development, then the review of the subdivision portion be administrative as well. The general plan's housing element was conceived to remove impediments to development. The housing element highlights, among other things, Assembly Bill 686, which again affirmatively requires the city to identify programs as well as assessment of fair housing practices. By requiring subdivision to be reviewed by the Planning Commission can potentially turn a by right land use into a project which can exceed two years in entitlement phase when the use itself is something that can be approved within weeks. The economic development element highlights several goals to ensure that the city is business-friendly and encourages quality development. By creating a by right path to subdivisions, the city reduces development costs to the applicant by thousands of dollars. The expedited nature of an administrative review saves time and brings development to market exponentially faster. The proposed amendment will not alter design standards, density, parking, or any other development standard or land use consideration. The proposed amendment proposes solely that by right land uses requiring subdivision of land be considered at the administrative level. Public hearing was given in accordance with both state law and the Carson Municipal Code and the planning department published a public hearing notice in the local paper. The proposed amendment to the Carson Municipal Code is exempt from review under California Environmental Quality Act under the Common Sense Exemption and Sequel guidelines, Section 1506.1b3, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the adoption of this ordinance may have a significant effect on the environment. In conclusion, the proposed amendment ensures that the city will not violate state law that protects and streamlines housing development. It also helps staff to expedite quality development. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission continue this item to March 11th to receive additional public testimony, if any, and give staff the opportunity to answer questions that you may have in the form of an ordinance.
Right.
This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very well done. If I may, and I think I'm going to state this right, as you read and presented, we have permits that are a part of our CMC, okay, of our code. But there are also county permits and things that are involved that kind of drag the process out. And so what we're attempting to do with the changes that we're looking to make is not to affect the hiring in any way. It is to expedite the process so that the development can begin sooner than later, as opposed to two years, as stated. And it also puts control of the development right here at the city council in the city of Carson. The Planning Commission, the city council. So we're trying to grab that control. And it is a process, I will say, that we're trying to make sure that we have the majority say about what is going to be developed here in Carson. This is critical. We don't want some other entity telling us how our property here in Carson is going to be. We want that control. So that's what this is all about. I appreciate what Mr. George said and I know he'll take this back to his constituents and let them know this is about us having control. And when we have that control, then we can continue to say, you're going to hire a certain percentage that's in Carson. You're going to continue to give us some apprenticeship. You can, all of the things that you brought up in your statement. So I wanted to make that, make sure that we are seeing this and say, would you agree with that, our Planning Commission manager?
I would agree and I would like to add to the conclusion.
Yes.
That if the commission is inclined to continue, continue the public hearing as well. I mean, continue, do not close the public hearing.
Yeah, so I'll go back and do that. But I just wanted to make sure that I stated what we're attempting to do with this.
Yes, because the general plan and, you know, Phase 1 and then ultimately Phase 2 highlights everything we would like to see. It gives objective development standards and it doesn't allow deviation from that with anything that we're doing tonight.
Okay, and our assistant city attorney, who's filling in for Ben Jones, Mr. Isaac Young. Are you in agreement?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Palmer did a good job explaining the intent behind it and that if we keep the public comment time period open for the next hearing on March 11th, then it'll give them an opportunity to speak and inquire further.
Absolutely. So we will continue this item. But before I continue this item, if there are any of my colleagues who would either have any additional questions or like to make a statement, I want to give them that opportunity.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Of Mr. Palmer. Does this in any way speak to the land use? Because that's what I'm hearing, that it would also put the land use right here.
Yeah, so, for example, the project that came before you with the two businesses wanting to divide, that's something that we would be able to take a look at at the staff level and help expedite that sale versus him waiting a year to come ask you for permission. And so what we evaluate, I mean, what I didn't tell you is that there's pages of requirements for tract maps. And about nine people, you know, look at it, you know, so the tract map, the parcel map, any subdivision map itself, we're checking in compliance, the lot's going to be the right size. We're not going to permit any type of undersized lots. So the concern is that, you know, a housing development comes in and it's something that's by right. And then to sell it, they have to come to here, but then they get in line. They, you know, ask, do they meet the standards that we've already said that they have met? But they just have to wait their turn to get from here. So they do meet the standards ahead of time. We just come here because it's a requirement in the code to bring it here.
I thank you so much for your explanation. Having worked in the assessor's office for over 25 years, I'm very well aware of all the steps. But it is most important to, for a resident to hear about the land uses and where that actual cut is coming in, sells the project real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you complete?
I'm complete.
Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Hello.
Hi.
I did want to thank Planning Manager Palmer for a very innovative solution to a challenge that I've been seeing for some time. I think, well, I know that speeding things up saves money. Saving money at the top does trickle down to the bottom. And even if people aren't as forthcoming, wanting to. wanting to trickle down to the bottom, just increased building, increased density will by nature trickle down to the bottom. To address the public comment, I, I do want to be careful that developer subjective, a developer can be someone building their first project, it can be someone building their 100th project. It could be a four-unit building, it could be a 400-unit building. If we blanket, if we start blanketing requirements, we, I'm sorry, if we start blanketing requirements, we basically end up back where we are with the TTM.
Right.
And those programs are very important and I think it should just be looked at on a case-by-case basis because at some point, when you do blanket those requirements or you have the TTM requirements or extraordinary cost to build, every developer will come from outside of the city.
That's right.
And you won't have mom and pop development, you won't have, I'm sorry, you won't have religious development, which is going on all over LA. And literally, we see blanket requirements impacting those cities. So I think it's important to just really look at things on a case-by-case basis, keeping in mind the importance of the, the programming, keeping in mind the importance of the prevailing wage, but just really have a wide-angle view because every developer's not building 400 units and every developer's not rich. And largely, those blanket requirements start keeping normal people from becoming that. I'm complete.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And I like that it's, you're putting some things at the, more things at the administrative level to help remove some of the red tape when you know that all the work has been done. And so why delay? I think it's a good thing, but for tonight, I will entertain a motion to, we will not close the public hearing, but we will continue the public hearing until the next meeting, which will be March 11, 2025. So can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Diaz made the motion, Dr. Dossel second. Roll call or?
I'm gonna do all in favor, please see eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your testimony, appreciate your presence here. Come see us anytime. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the manager's report.
I like the format of this and what I'm gonna try to do is when I bring you guys big things, that's a lot of reading, try to break it up for you, try to give kind of a workshop, kind of introduce it, get some questions out and then we'll go ahead and have the hearing for, we have some great stuff coming up.
Okay.
And so, you know, I know you love to read, so.
Hey, and change is good, let's mix it up, I'm all about mixing it up.
So that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have the commissioners' oral communications. I'm gonna start to my far right with Commissioner Johnson.
Just happy to be here, happy to be contributing to and supporting innovative change. I think this is big and it's the beginning of probably many big innovative ideas. I'm happy to be part of it and hopefully as a city, we make a change and hopefully we, we can encourage others around us to, to do so, just understanding the pressure from recent disasters, buildings more important than it's ever been. And I've, I've heard other municipalities speak to the bureaucracy and I didn't even under, I didn't know that they knew there was a bureaucracy around the process. So I'm, I'm happy to be a part of it and extremely excited.
Thank you, Commissioner Fumei.
I'm happy to be here this evening. I don't have anything to report, but I do want to say I love the changes that's going on, removing barriers is always important. So just great to be here. Thank you.
Great to have you. Okay, to my far left, Commissioner Wilson.
I don't have anything to report either, but I definitely want to thank Commissioner Johnson for his commentary. And I think his points are very, were very, were made. And we have a really great community and commission, I think, that really supports, you know, your, your commentary. And that's one of the things I really enjoy and appreciate about not just our commission, but also our mayor and our council, who really understands, you know, the importance of uplifting our community. And it's really the small things that we do like this, including the comments that you made, that helps us, you know, use our position to uplift our own community. So thank you.
Awesome, Commissioner Doc Dossel.
Good evening. Nothing to report, but I do want to express my appreciation our, you know, our, our planning manager and staff for the preparation that it takes to run these meetings, really. Obviously, you know, you, you folks do a lot of the heavy lifting for and on behalf of the Planning Commission. So thank you all for what you do. And it's always, you know, it's always a privilege being with my fellow commissioners, especially as we do our part, as has been mentioned, towards, you know, Carson's future unlimited. That completes me, thank you.
Commissioner Huff.
Good evening, everyone. Shortly, I don't have anything to report.
I do have one question.
Do we?
Okay, first of all, quit pushing now.
Do we have our own goes out, do we have our own engineers yet in the city? I know we always, so we no longer contract with the county.
No, not, not for building and safety or public works.
Very good. Well, then that is, that's
I think we wanted contracting when we did inspections, right?
Our Building and Safety Department was contracted through the county.
Okay.
For years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm really happy to hear that. That's a lot of growth and this is a step in the right direction then. Yes, I agree with Commissioner Johnson, we don't want to blanket anything, but case by case, this is really good. Thank you so much for doing a wonderful job, everyone that is here. It's delightful to sit here on this podium and I guess we're ready to go.
Not in a minute. See, she just closed it right down, didn't she?
I'm ready, I'm ready now, hey.
Wait, where's my gavel? I better move it over to this side. Okay. Vice Chair Diaz.
I have no report this evening, but I echo the same sentiments of my colleagues here. And I also reserve my right to disagree with some of the comments or statements, but otherwise, I'm in sync. Thank you.
That sounds like a sidebar with somebody other than me, so I'm good with that. It's always a pleasure to be here and, and, and to handle the city's business and I love when it's moving forward. And, and the idea that this city is always thinking about its residents, even with the businesses that we do bring into the city. The residents are always under consideration to make sure that they are well, well-cared for. And of course, we want to be friendly to the businesses because that's revenue that's coming to the city. So we can all just get along and be a nice, big, happy, melting pot family, it's a wonderful thing. If you missed the Black History Celebration last Friday night on the 21st, you missed a good time. That's all I can tell you. If you weren't there and you didn't even get a chance to see our own Ms. McKenna on the floor doing her thing. It was an awesome celebration. I know that there are pictures out there, I'm not sure if they're actually on the website yet or not, but I think they're gonna make their way to the website, are they there? You know a guy? I know a guy too. Yeah, yeah, video presentation by our own Edgar, you know, he helped with that. The staff was incredible, everything just came out so well and there were so many people. I think it was our largest crowd for Black History since we've been doing it here in Carson and we are talking over 10 years. So for anyone who only came Friday and thought that we didn't do enough, that means you missed all the other years that we did do it. So be kind or you will feel my wrath. Now, I appreciate everyone supporting it and as we continue to go forward with the next big thing, I guess I could call it the next big thing, in March 20th will be the State of the City Address given by our mayor will be at the Event Center. And it's at 11 o'clock, March 20th. You don't want to miss it. And you want to get there early if you haven't already registered for a seat because people come from all cities around to see what the presentation is gonna be. And every year, she tops herself, so you don't want to miss it. So we have a lot of things going on, keeps us excited, keeps us on our toes. You know, I know if you don't live in Carson, I know you want to, but, you know, come and visit us. It's been a great night, thank you for your time, we are adjourned.